I'll call to order the February meeting of the Oxford Planning Commission.
This meeting is being recorded and or transcribed.
All right. Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda from staff or from the commission? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I hope you've had a chance to review the minutes from the January meeting. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes from that meeting?
Yeah.
Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
A second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Ben, do we have a staff report today?
Just the, the only thing I want to point out is, we do have something new that's on the Planning Commission agendas online, and that's a digital map for the cases, our GIS. Leslie, GIS coordinator Leslie Rakestraw has been working for, on that for a couple of months now, has put it together, and I think it's a great way to help people navigate around, see where they, where the cases are going to be. It's also going to provide direct links to each of the staff reports. And then, once the case has been decided, you see that he's actually created an archive version of those cases, so you'll be able to see the, the legacy staff reports down, down the road. So, we're excited to have that, and we'll continue to refine it, you know, in the coming months, but I just want to bring that to y'all's attention.
I love it, I used it, thanks Ben. All right. First thing is the consent agenda. Please let the record show that Commissioner Mylum is recusing himself. Those cases are, public hearing for case 2823, for sale oil company has filed a request for site plan approval for dipsticks lube and tire at Colonnade Crossing. Case number 2824, Brett Boatwright has filed a request for site plan approval for Paragon Bank, South Lamar. Case number 2825, Oxford Commons has filed a request for a special exception for gated entries. Public hearing for case number 2826, the Kroger Company has filed a request for site plan amendment for Kroger Liquor Store on University Avenue. And case number 2836, Melissa Williams has filed a request for a variance from suburban residential rear yard setback lines at 423 North 15th Street. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, consent agenda is approved. Can we get Commissioner Mylum, please? Give him a second, we're joined. All right, let the record show that Commissioner Mylum has rejoined. Our first case for public hearing will be case number 2827, West Jackson LLC has filed a request for a variance from section 98-112, applicability of the stormwater ordinance for property located at 208 South Lamar.
This property is located northwest corner of South Lamar and Harrison Avenue, and was the former site of several restaurants over the years. The previous building was demolished in March 2020, and the site has been vacant since. The applicant has proposed a new building at that site, and the site plan is currently under review by staff. This request is for variance from the applicability standards of the stormwater ordinance. Engineering has provided comments about stormwater management, and they are on the line, if y'all have any questions about those, and the applicant is here.
Thank you, Robert. Commissioners, any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Auger, would you like to speak?
Good evening, I'm Corey Auger, I'm here representing Tim Smith and the 208 property. I want to begin, what I've given you is a cover letter sort of outlining what the variance is, and why we think it's warranted. So, I can go through here and kind of show you, but I think it's important to kind of note how we got here. We have several new members of the commission who weren't here, let's just say, in 2019 and 20 when all this thing was going on, but Corona's pushed everything back. But as you can see, Tim Smith bought the existing 208 building with the express purpose of renovating it. During the course of that renovation, it was determined that the building was not sound, the city condemned it, and the building was demolished. So, that's sort of the general outline of what you see for the background. We have received a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Commission, and revocable license from the Mayor and Board of Aldermen for the balconies, and I say in short, the design of the building has been vetted and approved. Mr. Smith comes before you tonight to seek a variance to the stormwater detention. So, as you can see from the facts, there is no city stormwater on Harrison Avenue, anywhere. Doesn't matter all the way down the bottom of the hill, all the way to the other side, until you get to Ninth or Tenth. No, the one that runs down the lot, what runs down beside the old State Company and the library, whatever, whatever that alley is, that's where the stormwater starts. There's no stormwater anywhere near the site, never has been. So, that's first. Second, the nearest point of the inlet is 160 feet away, and that's down in front of the old Sunshine intersection down there, and it's basically 26 inches deep. It catches the water off the street and pretty much lets it go. The, I guess the next thing I want to say is that between the site and that inlet is really the crux of the request. There is underground concrete vaults for electrical, underground concrete vaults for communications, there's gas lines, water lines, sewer lines, everything is happening right there. All those utilities serve the back of all those buildings facing the square. The elevation of those, when taken into account with the inlet 160 feet away, by the time you use the inlet, it's so shallow, we only have one spot we can actually use it, and so with the pipe running uphill a little bit, it gets right into all of that stuff. So, there's a strata of, let's say, two to six feet of utility, and trying to traverse that coming out of the basement of this building is just impossible to get from here to there. And because there's no existing storm sewer, therein lies the dilemma. How do we get from here to there? We can't. So, that's the crux of what we're asking. There are other issues that I think we should address. The, the impact of this site being 2,000 square, 2,032 square feet, and the fact that the ordinance also has a provision in it, if site plan review is not required, of anything 2,000 square feet and less, doesn't require stormwater detention. It kicks in with site plan review here, we're not arguing applicability at this point at all, we're fine with it, we just can't use it, we can't get there. So, the other part of, the next page is like, the criteria for a variance, what is it that we're here to review? What special conditions exist which are peculiar to the property? A lot of utilities in the way. How would a strict application of the stormwater detention requirements result in practical difficulty, unnecessary hardship? The idea that we can't get stormwater off the building, into the ground, and into an inlet, is a unique situation, and any other solution would be providing what we call a practical difficulty or an unnecessary hardship. And so, the last thing is, how would this variance be not materially detrimental to the public welfare, or injurious to the adjoining properties or neighborhood? This is where I'd like to pause for a second and look at that third sheet that I gave you. There's an aerial photograph of a tax map overlaid on an aerial photograph, and you'll see kind of in the middle of it, you'll see the square, and you'll see that little red dot. And the reason that I say this is because sometimes when you're in the middle of these sort of every sites in and of itself, you kind of lose sight for the forest, for the trees. Of all those properties you see in that tax map, virtually every single one of them has no stormwater detention whatsoever. That doesn't mean they should, it means they don't have it. And because there, it's an older neighborhood with older sewer and older buildings, and I completely agree that as you improve something, you should be improving it according to the ordinance. We're not arguing with the idea that the ordinance isn't applicable, not yet, we're arguing that the ordinance needs a variance because it's simple math that we can't get from here to there. So, finally, as I, as I say in my letter, if there was ever a textbook reason for a variance, this is it. There are underlying concerns among all the staff and the commission that once people start granting variances, people can start lining up, he got a variance, I get a variance, that's applicable, that's not applicable. There's very simple, unique conditions here. One is, the city of Oxford has no storm sewer, not near the site. Secondly, the owner of the building had an existing building that was actually a little larger in the footprint than this one, the old 208 building, which he bought to renovate. The very same city that's condemned that building for demolition is now requesting that it comply with a new set of rules, which is stormwater detention. We have facts that have simple logistical, mathematical facts, cannot get storm sewer from here to here without going underneath of all of them, and if you do, you'll be going uphill, because the inlet is so shallow. So, of all that, we have a very small site, we have a very insignificant site in terms of its overall macro scale of stormwater detention, and we have a unique situation in that the owner of the building had no intention of building a building until the building was condemned. So, those are the reasons why we're asking for a variance of stormwater, and I'm happy to address any and all of those, but I've got the math, the last thing I want to tell you is that the map I gave you has spot elevations on it to kind of reinforce what I'm telling you about the math.
All right, I appreciate that, I've got a few questions.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in real quick? This is Paul, I'm on the line.
Sure, I think you're probably going to ask one of my questions at least, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to point out real quick, and y'all can, go ahead, I'll get out of your hair, that building was not condemned, McCory said that several times, it was not, the owner was allowed to tear it down because of safety conditions, the city did not condemn that building, that's a specific thing, and it did not happen. Also, the design of the building has not been approved, in the sense that a site plan has come forward, as your staff noted earlier, the site plan is still under review and the variance is before y'all. I just want to make sure those couple of things are clear.
Thank you, Paul.
So, what, what happened to the building?
My understanding is that a demolition request was put into the city, and the city approved it, not that the city condemned the building, is that correct, Paul?
That's my understanding, yeah.
There's a letter from the building inspector saying the building was unsafe, that's, I mean, I don't, I don't have that letter.
Corey, Corey, if you have minutes that show the building condemned by the city, go find them, it was not. Condemnation is a specific legal proceeding, it did not happen here, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Auger, did the city at any point tell you that you had to discharge underground?
Did they ask me if I had to discharge on the ground?
Underground, you said you can't tie in with the stormwater. Did they tell you that you had to tie in with the stormwater? Did they tell you that you could not discharge at street level?
No, we're asking for a variance, they're requiring stormwater detention on site.
Yeah, but they didn't tell you had to tie in to a stormwater system offsite, right? Have you explored any engineering options that would allow you to discharge at street level?
No.
Okay.
What would they be?
Well, you have an engineer working on the project, right?
There's two things, I, I don't understand the general premise of the question, but let me just clarify. The building is 45 feet square, and the property occupies 100% of the building, so anything that discharges away from the building, one inch, is in the city right of way. So, any changes to the stormwater detention would have to modify the city right of way?
No, they would modify the design of the building.
To do what?
To retain, to detain stormwater.
And when I discharge the stormwater, where would it go?
And has the city told you that you cannot discharge to the street?
No, they told me I had to detain it and discharge it, the only place to discharge it would be below grade.
No, the only, you can discharge to the street level, and the city will allow you to do that, nothing in code that would prevent you from doing that. And you, you have not presented us any design that would do any detention of stormwater, none.
We have no problem with detention requirement, none, we just can't get to the city inlet.
Have you asked the city if they require you to tie in to a subsurface stormwater drain?
No, because that, we can't get to it, we're asking for the variance.
I would recommend that you discuss with the city engineer what the discharge requirements are, because right here on the face of it, there's nothing for us to approve or deny. There is no variance request because there's no design proposed. We are talking about the applicability of the stormwater code right here, and as far as I can see, there's nothing at this site that would prevent us from a full application of the stormwater requirement.
That's the reason we're seeking a variance, because of the existing conditions do not allow us to detain the water on site and discharge it.
Do you know the difference between stormwater detention and retention?
Retention and detention.
Okay. Retention means you keep it onsite, there's like, there's a pond that keeps water in it. Detention means you slow it down, okay? So, you don't have to keep the stormwater onsite, you don't have to discharge it underground either, you have to slow down the stormwater discharge to reduce peak flows, all right?
Okay.
So, when you come up with a design that slows down stormwater flows, we can look at a variance if it doesn't meet the standards, but there's no design here for us to consider, and your site does fall within the stormwater ordinance requirements, so.
The applicability of, of the stormwater requirements, to me, are not, is a separate issue. However, what we're presenting to you tonight is consideration of a variance to those requirements. I think we can make a very strong case that we exempt from the storm, from storm requirements, that's a separate issue.
Your, so far, your criteria, the one reason you say you can't comply with stormwater is because you can't tie in to a subsurface stormwater drain.
That's right.
The city doesn't require it, so there's no need for a variance.
There is in this case, given the design of the building.
There is no requirement to tie in to a subsurface drain.
It is, if you're going to be subsurface with your detention.
There is no city requirement to tie into a subsurface drain.
At this point, I've given you math, inlet, detention elevation, traversing city utilities, subsurface. Anything else other than that, I don't know, I don't know what to tell you. We're here giving, my letter is pretty clear, I think it states pretty clearly why this is a unique situation, and why we're in this position, and we don't have a problem with detention, we just have no place to take it. And what you're saying is, well, you could just take it out on the street if you just do something different. I'm like, what do you mean, do something different?
There are engineering solutions that will allow you to slow the runoff down and discharge it to the street. If you cannot present one of those options for consideration, there's nothing here for a variance. It's between you and your engineer to come up with a proposed design for the stormwater. Do you have an engineer on the project?
Sure.
Have you asked them whether there are options for this building that would discharge to the street but meet the requirements of the stormwater ordinance?
The engineer is here, but there's, there's.
So, I just wanted, when I come up with something, I just want to know what the idea is here. So, is the idea to shrink the building footprint and put storage above ground so we can discharge it into the street, or is it to put it underground and pump up to the street, which I think is, is not a good idea?
Either one, right now, we have no design to look at to decide the merits or otherwise. All we have been told is that you can't do it, and there's nothing in the stormwater code that prevents you to be, or in the utilities around the area that prevents you from being able to do it on this site. There is a design that's viable, from an engineering standpoint, whether it's viable for your project is another question, and we can consider that for a variance. But there are ways, whether it's detention in subsurface that you pump up, or within the footprint of the building that you just provide the proper orifice to discharge to the street, but, but you agree that those are engineering solutions?
Sure, I don't think they're, I don't think they're viable in this case, though, I mean, you could, I mean, I think I could come up with, you know, a 200-story building to put on the square, but I don't think that's what needs to be there.
But if we are ruling out all potential engineering solutions, we're talking about the applicability of the stormwater code to this site, and that's exactly what Mr. Auger said we're not doing.
Right.
Give us a design to consider. If you come back and say, this is what we can do that is viable for this site within the project's limits, we can't do the full stormwater requirement, that's something that we consider. Just telling us that they're engineering solutions, but we're not going to try to apply any of them, is not acceptable.
Or, what about the rule that says we have to be 40 feet from the property line to discharge?
That hasn't come up, because there's no, there's no proposal so far.
Okay. Okay.
We got, the idea that we have criteria for a variance, what special conditions exist, we have strict application of stormwater detention requirements, which create practical difficulties and unnecessary hardship, that is a criteria under which we're asking for the variance. There is little or no impact whatsoever, based on the map that I showed you, that this particular piece of property should be subject to new rules and regulations, which we're not here to talk about applicability, but the bottom line is, as we've determined, there is no viable option for what it is you're saying is a viable option. So, we have a difference of opinion, I don't know what to tell you. The only way for us to get the water out of the building, it has to be subsurface, based on the design of the building. We cannot do that, we're not against the stormwater detention requirements, we just can't use them because we can't get to one, and you're going, well, there are other options, some of them, well, that's an engineering problem, I went, the engineer and I have looked at the problem, there aren't engineering solutions to this.
Your engineer, with respect, your engineer just said that there are engineering solutions, whether they are viable for this project or not is yet to be determined.
I'm telling you, as the design professional, they're not viable, which is why I'm asking for the variance.
With respect, you told us that you have the math, and so far, all you've presented is geography.
This map right here, the one I gave you.
Which is geography.
No, it's math. The inlet that you see, 160 feet down the street, has an invert elevation of 29365. If you take that plus the depth of the pipe, blah, 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 you end up probably at top of pipe at 295. If I take that pipe and I go uphill, just say just one foot, I'm at 296, 160 feet, I'm at 296, top of pipe. If you look at the spot elevation, that has these concrete monuments and all that stuff that, that below surface utilities, between two and six feet is all the utilities. Monuments underground for electrical, monuments underground for communications, gas lines, water lines, they all happen right there. And so, the idea that I can go uphill and I hit this six-foot area of utilities, and somehow, I can't get to them, which I can't, because you can't navigate through that stuff, it's just too much of it at the wrong elevation. If the inlet were lower, if the city wants to bring, somehow tie onto that inlet and bring it up the road, and put it like it did at Funky's, 10 feet out in front of the front door, I mean, Funky's storm sewer's from me to Harry, they can hit it, I'm 160 feet away going through all these utilities, viability is the reason I'm here. There isn't a viable solution for the building design to discharge onto the street, without just discharging onto the street, because I can't detain it in the basement and let it out. Can't physically, math, cannot detain it onsite and let it out. I don't know what to tell you.
Thank you, Mr. Auger. Commissioners, are there any more questions?
Are you doing anything currently now, I mean, because I know, the building's been taken down and there's. I mean, because I know the building's been taken down and there's a big hole there. Is there anything being done with, I guess the water's just sitting there now, right?
Yeah, it's just filling up the hole and it seeps into the earth.
So, I'm definitely not a water expert. But, to discharge it at street level and not pump it up, obviously, it would have to be detained, retained, retained.
Higher than the street level.
Higher than the street level, say, on the first floor, basically, of the building. So, I understand you don't want to redo your design of the building, but...
Well, let's go, the, the...
That is, that is...
Let's just say this, I think that...
What might have to happen and if, I mean, you know, I don't know, I mean, but just to say it can't be put out on the street is not...
Well, Joey has calculated, it's a thirty-foot pipe, thirty-six inches in diameter for this itty-bitty little site. Now, the stormwater detention plan's skewed, you know, for smaller sites anyway, aside that. So, I'm looking at five feet. I mean, I'm telling, we've done the math.
It is hard for smaller sites. I do think there should be different, different regulations for smaller sites. I do.
The, the design professionals here have looked at this thing, said, the building design, if I'm going to hang a thirty-six-inch diameter pipe from the first-floor ceiling so I can discharge it out on the street, that's a practical difficulty and an unnecessary hardship, in my opinion. And that's why we're here.
Mr. Auger, the code itself can never be an unnecessary hardship. There needs to be conditions of the site that make strict application of the code.
I think we've clearly identified the hardship and conditions of the site.
Well, are you familiar with the next section under the criteria for variance where it says, "The planning commission shall further make a finding that the reasons stated in the application justify the granting of the variance and that the variance is the minimum variance that will make possible the reasonable use of the land, building, or structure." You're telling me that you can't come up with an engineering solution that would slow down one drop of water on that site? There is no viable way to do it.
One drop of water is easily done.
Well, then, show us a design that's...
The design is not going to meet the criteria for stormwater detention.
And we will consider the minimum variance from the requirements that make it viable and nothing more. Do you understand?
I understand.
I got another question. So, how did the, Corey, if you've looked at this, the other buildings that, around the square, I mean, do they just have gutters and they go out into the curb? Is that, is that what we have?
Everything discharges on the street.
But part of the point of the code is, as things are rebuilt, they are built back in a way that will help going forward.
This building...
And, and it is definitely not the smallest parcel on the square.
Really?
Oh, really? I'm pretty sure I might own the smallest parcel on the square. But, um, but it, it is something to think about going forward. If you want viable buildings on the square, can you force someone to take a huge chunk out of that small building for this? I mean, it is something to think about, but, um, but, um, which they are, that there has to be, just coming in and saying, we can't do it without trying to do any of it, is, I don't think is something I'm in favor of.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't know what to tell you. I mean, I, I, if we're going to ask for a variance to do something and we're going to go, okay, well, we can do this, we come back and go, okay, well, maybe there's another solution. Maybe there's another solution. I'm going, sooner or later, we're putting it on the street, right? So, we're saying, just slow it down. Okay, we'll slow it down.
Well, I think we're saying it's going on the street. That's not the...
It's got to go on the street.
We're not, no one's disputing that.
Okay, so, we're good with the fact that I can't hit the inlet? So, now, me and Joey are going to go back and figure out how much of a variance we actually need that we can actually bring water down, hold whatever water we can hold, and discharge it in the street at street level?
Yes, sir. I think we're communicating.
Okay.
I, I think you hit the nail on the head right there, Corey.
Thanks, Paul.
All right.
So, we'll, we'll just step back, put a table in, come back.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to postpone to the March meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I second.
All right, moving on to case number twenty-eight twenty-eight. Corey Auger has filed a request for site plan approval for Grand Oaks Office Park Building One for a property located at the southeast corner of Grand Oaks Boulevard and Barron Street.
This property measures about a quarter acre and it's commercially zoned property in the Grand Oaks Pud. Development proposals for a two-story office building located on, I guess, approximate, I think I said it's a quarter of acre, it's, excuse me, it's twenty-three acres and this would be on approximately an acre. Grand Oaks Pud master plan indicated this portion of property along Highway Seven, Grand Oaks Boulevard, Barron Street, shall be developed in neighborhood-scale commercial in December of 2019. A site plan was approved for an office building on this property, but it was actually across from, from Barron Street along Highway Seven. That site plan has since expired. The use of an office is permitted in, in the zoning district. The proposal requires a total of thirty-three parking spaces and this development does comply with this requirement by providing thirty-seven. The building facade materials, the north elevation indicates doors at the ground level and a second-floor balcony. The proposed building will be constructed of a mix of glass windows and doors, stone veneer, and wood siding. The proposal does not include a photometric survey or a lighting plan. Staff has requested that to be provided and it's a condition of, of this report. Signage, the plans do not indicate any signage and, as it always is the case, it's reviewed separately prior to either permitting or, or the installation of any signage. There is a buffer that's required. This property is, is commercial. It's adjacent to residential use. You'll see that on the, the east side of the property. There's a fifty-foot buffer. There's some existing vegetation that the applicant has proposed to retain to help provide, you know, it's evergreens and so, they want to keep that because it does really well with, especially in winter time, providing some screenage. But they've also bolstered that, that buffer with additional planting and we believe that they do meet the eighty percent screen that's required. The building does have foundation plantings on the north elevation and the heavy-edge planting is indicated. There's some rolling hills there. They're trying to utilize with some additional landscaping there. But they do indicate a mix of grasses, shrubs, flowering plants, and trees. HVAC equipment will be located, will not be located on the building and, and so, there's no, no requirement to screen it if it's up on top with a parapet. The dumpster enclosure, the dumpster for the site's located in an atypical location. Most of the times, the dumpster's located inside of the, in the parking lot. In this particular instance, the applicant does not want the garbage truck in the parking lot of the site, so therefore, the dumpster is located off on a separate drive that's adjacent to the parking lot. And there were concerns related to the dumpster and the drive and the potential for, for tipping based on some of the grades that were originally shown. There's also concerns about backing out into the street. You'll see, that was noted in the engineering comments that were in here. Subsequently, we did receive a, a modification to the site plan that's also included in your staff report that shows an extended driveway. Engineering and environmental services are still reviewing, reviewing that. Engineering did provide additional comments related to drainage, drainage, stormwater management that's included in your report and the utilities. And then, there is a staff recommendation of approval with the six conditions listed in, in your staff report. Corey is the applicant. He's here. Joey's the engineer. So, if you have any questions of them, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the commission?
I've got a general question and this may be better suited for the engineering department. Is there any requirement about these corrugated steel pipes that we're allowing to do stormwater detention? Are they, are they required to be rust-proof, for lack of a better term? Rihanna, are you there?
I am here. We do not have any requirement for the, for the owner for what they choose to do on their own property. We don't allow them on city street within our right-of-way for those type of concerns, particularly with our soil conditions. But, we don't have any requirements about the private property.
Thank you.
Ben, I may have missed this in your report, but with the, the placement of the dumpster enclosure is dependent on Barron Street remaining private. Is that right?
Yeah, dumpster enclosure will be considered an accessory structure. You can't have them in the front yard. But in this instance, because Barron is a private drive or a private road, it's actually not a front yard, even though in theory it, it is. But, so, you know, to that end, I mean, it, the city would have a hard time accepting that as a city street in the future without remedying that issue.
Okay, so, all of the maintenance on that stretch of the road would remain with the building's owners?
Yes, it's my understanding that that is the case now. Rihanna, Rihanna might address that, though.
Okay. Rihanna, anything to add?
No, it's been stated correctly. It is a private street. The city has not accepted that portion for maintenance. I feel like at some point, the owner is going to come and request again that we accept it. I don't know that. But, um, based on just what we see in town with people requesting we take the streets, I feel like that'll happen at some point.
Yeah.
But right now, it's all private.
I mean, the reason I ask is, it seems like that's going to happen in the future because right now, effectively, the owners are committing to keep up the asphalt for a much larger space. I mean, Rihanna, what will be the response from the city if they ask for that to be turned over?
We would ask for an engineering certification that it was built and the, the reason it's not been accepted, there was some history when it was built about how it was built and about the, the construction materials, I believe. Based on the fact that it's sat now for, you know, a large number of years, I think the city would probably look at it a little differently regarding acceptance now because it's proven essentially that it, it stayed in place. It hasn't fallen in. I can't speak for the board, but visually, it appears that it would be an acceptable street in the future.
So, are we, are we setting ourselves up, excuse me, for a situation where engineering would ultimately sign off on it and planning would be stuck with a dumpster enclosure in the side yard?
I think it would be part of our discussions.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Anybody from the audience wish to speak on this case? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight twenty-eight for site plan approval. Subject to...
Motion to approve, subject to staff...
We have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Our next case is case number twenty-eight twenty-nine. Andy Calcutt has filed a request for site plan approval for Oxford Farms Senior Living Contages for property located at Farmview Drive.
I'm going to recuse myself.
All right. Let the record show that Commissioner Milam is accusing himself.
So, this property measures about six and a half acres. It's in the Oxford Farms development. It's south of Farmview Drive. It's located on Lot Two of Oxford Farms Phase Two subdivision. Lots One and Three are developed with Creekside condominiums, which were approved in 2015. And then, to the east of this property is assisted living facility that was approved in December of 2019. The applicant actually appeared regarding this piece of property before the, the planning commission for a special exception back in September for ground-floor residential. So, the site plan's very, very similar to what was proposed at that time. Again, the use was a special exception and this will also have a residential common interest development, which is a special use requirement, which we do have, which we do have in file and is subject to the approval of this. The proposal requires a total of seventy parking places. They've provided seventy-three. Architecturally, it seems to be consistent with the character of Oxford Farms. The rest of the development residences are constructed with a variety of paint and hardyboard siding, I'm sorry, painted brick and hardyboard siding. They have tapered wood columns and wood beams and, and wood brackets as additional architectural elements. And many of the proposed units are rear-loading units with garages at the rear of the building that either front towards the main drive into the development or to a proposed green space. Every unit contains at least one garage, but some do have two. The plans do not have any signage, so again, subject to staff approval for signage. Tree mitigation was reviewed for this and it is required for a hundred and seventy-two two-inch caliber trees to be mitigated and the applicant is proposing to do so on-site with planting. There is a buffer along the southern portion of this property because it's along an existing Blue Lime stream and the development plans do require a healthy buffer and there's no construction work taking place in, in that area. Foundation plantings are indicated on all the buildings. Heavy-edge planting is there. Engineering did provide comments related to water sewer and utility, traffic access, sidewalks retaining malls, and stormwater management in your report. Staff recommends approval of this development with the five conditions noted in the staff report.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions from the commission? Anyone from the public wish to speak? All right. Hearing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight twenty-nine.
Motion to approve, subject to staff conditions.
I got a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right. It is approved. Our next case, excuse me, is case number twenty-eight thirty. Lee Harris has filed a request for a variance from Section ninety-eight dash one eighteen, Performance Criteria for Stormwater Management of the Stormwater Ordinance for Property Located at Ten Twelve Jackson Avenue East.
Yes, this is a, a variance, as you just stated, from the Stormwater Management Ordinance for Funky's. This is the actual, the, the new portion of Funky's that was constructed. It's the site of the old S and J, S and J building. Engineering did provide comments in the staff report. They're available online to answer any specific questions and Tom Hoaworth here is to present the application to you.
Thank you, Ben.
I'm Tom Hoaworth. I'm the architect for the, for the Funky's addition and I guess I'm taking a page out of my colleague Corey Auger's hymnal to talk about how challenging it is to retain stormwater where infrastructure's been developed for a hundred and fifty years. It wasn't an issue until fifteen or twenty years ago and, of course, we have a lot of those things. And, at the beginning of this project, I discussed with Ben and with Rihanna the idea of getting a variance because of the impracticality of providing stormwater infrastructure for a thousand-square-foot building on a thousand-square-foot piece of property. And the solution that we wound up trying was to detain the water on the rooftop where, you know, the, the charitable pros of the engineer's report is that we failed to coordinate our work with our civil engineer. That's not exactly accurate, but I can see why that would be said. First of all, it's not our civil engineer, not that that matters, but the engineer was hired by somebody else. And the, and the project was, like every project that starts with site plan approval, the civil engineer has the lion's share of the work to do. The architect does a building design and what was presented with the site plan package was the plan, the elevations that we had at the time. And there was no technical building development. There was no mechanical engineering, electrical engineering, or anything like that. So, in our, in our defense, you know, we didn't, we did change a lot. In fact, we changed everything because we did our work after the site plan approval was, was given. The, and, and the engineer was working toward our concept of trying to do stormwater detention. The, and, and the engineer was working toward our concept of trying to do stormwater detention on the roof, where we would obviously treat a portion, at least, of the roof as a bathtub that would hold water so that we could comply with the 100-year flood mitigation requirement, releasing rainwater at a reduced velocity. And so the, the engineer's plans showed a 1 1/2-inch orifice in a plate. In other words, a 1 1/2-inch hole that would permit X amount of water, whatever his calculations were based on, through a 1 1/2-inch hole. When we interpret that to architectural terms, there is not a plate with 1-inch hole that works as a roof drain. So we substituted a controlled-flow roof drain, which is a roof drain that has a dome system on top that can be opened or regulated to, it can, it can regulate the flow rate into the drain to, to comply with the design intent, which was to detain the water. And so, yes, that's not what the engineer proposed, but that's our closest interpretation that works in a roof system. The, the, the reality is, what was added subsequent that constrained the roof area on which the engineer's calculations were based were the addition of a roof hatch, which is code requirement, and I think the mounting of the, of an exhaust fan. And the other rooftop equipment is actually mounted on blocks, which don't, in fact, displace a lot of water. So I don't, I don't know exactly, I haven't, I haven't studied the degree of our failure to comply, but I would argue that we gave it a good college try. And not that I accept failure, but it would be overly burdensome to, at this point, achieve specific performance at, at a cost that doesn't do, that is disproportionate to the consequences of doing it, of, of, of having to, having to make those changes, which is essentially a redesign, reconstruction of the roof systems. We're also concerned that if we increase the capacity, we might wind up with too much head pressure and possibly run into a situation where the roof drain, instead of slowing it down, starts to siphon. And we'd, certainly, that would be going backwards from where we are. So philosophically, my position when we started this project was that stormwater detention should be a city effort, not an individual property owner effort in the courthouse area. Every piece of property there is enormously valuable, not just in terms of its monetary value to, to the owners, but to the public use of that, of these buildings. And it makes sense for us to develop. This is why the square has been developed the way it was. You know, the sidewalks are out there for people to use. Parking is not required on a per-building basis, because it's provided on a district basis. Garbage collection is not per tenant, per owner, per building. It's, it's on a district basis. So these are the kinds of things that we, as a community, cooperate on, so that they, they are there to, to benefit the entire community. And it's, I realize that, you know, it takes work for a city to get ahead of these problems, but that's at least a holistic effort that acknowledges the real problem of stormwater detention and solves it in the most immediately, the, the way, the way communities solve problems. And I don't think there's, there are any property owners who would benefit from this investment, who wouldn't see the benefit of, of paying their fair share to support it. But I maintain this is a community problem. This is a problem that was created not by the property owners, but by the, by the way the city was developed, and, and the rules changed because the need for the rules to change occurred. So...
Thank you, Mr. Hoaworth. I'll say, you know, you addressed two things. One, the broader philosophical issue, and I think Commissioner Riddell raised similar issues on previous case. And, you know, that's something that we can take into advisement and discussion on the ordinance, but for the purposes of this case, we work with the ordinance we've got. And if you wouldn't mind, can I just summarize the case and get you to tell me if I understand it correctly? What I understand is that the property was redeveloped. As a part of that, they had to do stormwater detention. They came up with a design that met the requirements of the code in the process of the, you know, all of the interactions that go on in a project. Pieces were added on the roof that weren't part of the original design that reduced the overall detention capacity, so that it no longer met code. And now we're talking about a variance to deal with that, since it is constructed, and to go in and make changes now would be a hardship. Is that correct?
As, as far as I understand it, I've got to be honest, I'm not down in the weeds with this project...
Sure.
...every day, but Rihanna may know something more than I do.
Rihanna, is that correct?
I think it is.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, I realize it's the same issue in terms of stormwater on the square, but in every other way, I see this as a very different case from the previous. I mean, we have an effort to meet the standards of the code. We have a design that met the standards of the code. It's not ideal for the construction not to be as designed, but I think everything else is within the spirit of the code and meets the city's requirements. Any questions from the commission?
I have one that may have been in there on the state. How far off are we from meeting?
That's another, that's another question that I don't know the answer to. I don't know what degree of rainfall or what percentage of the 100-year rainfall we may have met. Rihanna, have you all talked about that? How close, how close did we get?
Yeah, so I've got, I've got the numbers. So it meets 100% of the requirements for the 25-year storm. So if we're looking at this project from 2014, then it's 100% compliant. So the project, as it's built now, does provide stormwater benefit to the surrounding area to the, to the 25-year storm is completely managed. The 100-year storm, the volume is all, it's, it's off by 1/100th of a cubic foot per second, so the volume is, is, is off by a small amount. The, the 2 and the 10-year storm are also off by small amounts, and what it is, is that it lets the water out a little bit faster. It's still detaining water, but it's, because of the orifice sizes, it is allowing that water to flow out faster. And let me...
That's the controlled-flow drain versus the 1 1/2-inch orifice.
Yeah, but...
There's not a roof drain that's that small.
Yeah, but it meets 100% of the 25-year. It's just that it's letting the water out faster at the 2-year and the 10, and it's 0.01 cubic feet per second on the 100-year per volume, per flow.
Okay, for, for regular people, is there like a percentage? Like they got it 70, say for the 100-year, it's 75% of what we wanted? Or, you know, for the 2-year, is it 50% of what we wanted or what the ordinance says?
I'm, I'm going to let John Granberry, I'm going to let him, their engineer, talk about the percentage, and he can get deeper. I, I'm like Tom in that I am not deep in the weeds on this stormwater. Steve Rotten is our stormwater engineer, but he's brilliant with all of this. So he's been very deep and deeply involved in it, and of course, John Granberry as the engineer has all this information, so I'm going to let him first attempt that part.
Is John on? Okay.
I am.
Hi, John, go ahead.
Okay, so like Rihanna said, the 100-year is 1/100th of a cubic foot per second off, which is 99% meets the requirements. So that's, that's very close. The 25-year is 100% of the requirement. It meets the city's stormwater ordinance requirements. I'm doing the math now on the 10. Let's see. The 10-year is 75%. It meets 75%. Let's see. And the 2-year, the 2-year is only 36%, so it's not, it's, it's going to release more, and that's all due to the size of the, the prefabricated orifice that was installed versus a 1 1/2-inch orifice that was specified. And Andy's right, I did not intend for anybody to go out and buy a prefabricated orifice. What I intended was for a plate to, a quarter-inch plate with a, to have a 1 1/2-inch hole punched in the top of it, and then just a, you know, then a debris cover put over to prevent anything from stopping up the 1 1/2-inch orifice, so...
Okay, so with, I mean, with it as constructed, it gets more, more compliant as the storm gets larger? Is that right?
That's correct, because, yeah, because of the orifice size, yes.
Okay.
The, the other thing I'd point out is that a 2-year storm is something that we experience a lot. A 100-year storm requires a lot of time to accumulate the water relatively. A 2-year storm, you can get in a relatively short amount of time, and if you take 1,000 square feet and then all of the street and everything else, our contribution to that excess, that flood event is relatively minor.
I have a question. How, how did this even come about?
Sustainability.
No, 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 no. I mean, how did, how do we even figure, how did this even come up as an issue in this particular case?
It's a, it's a code requirement. I mean, the requirement to detain...
Somebody get up on the roof and go, wait, that's a bigger hole than there should be? I mean, I was...
No, the city, the city required a, the owner to perform a post-construction survey...
Okay.
...as they do on, on storm detention systems that are more conventionally on the ground, and to confirm the compliance and that the design intent is met.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing was that there were elements on the roof that weren't figured into the design that took up volume.
And, and honestly, I'm just trying to figure that out, because I don't want, I don't want us to get into a pattern where everybody comes back and asks for forgiveness after, you know, hey, yeah, we designed this, and we were going to do this, but we had to put this box here and this box there, didn't work, and we actually designed, designed and built the building, so, you know, please forgive us. You know, of that, that kind of seems...
What, this may be a question for still the engineer, well, it is a question for the engineers, because I was really there with you when we were at 99% with the 100-year, and then it got worse from there, because we did get a 2-year storm. Oh, it seems like we get 100-year storm every couple of years now.
Every two years.
Right. But, so, without ripping the whole roof off and starting from scratch, can things be done to make this better now, from an engineering standpoint?
Yeah.
What?
Great.
What can be done, John?
Maybe to take the 15-inch diameter Zern controlled-flow roof drain that they installed and install an inch-and-a-half diameter orifice with a trash rack on it, like was spec.
How much hardship is doing that?
I don't know.
Rihanna, the, I mean, have we done another rooftop detention system in Oxford before?
This is the first one that, that's been done like this. We have learned a lot, obviously. It is a small site. It was, it was a challenge, and we have had the conversations Tom mentioned about, you know, these projects in the square. We expect to see more of them, and so that is why we have, have looked to try to be sure that we're, you know, getting these requirements in. We are also looking for some regional opportunities, just so that y'all know, or I guess Tom is the one that raised that idea, but this is the first one that we've done like this, and so we've learned some things. I think one of the most important things we've learned is that we would be looking for, you know, more coordination, and we would know what to look for more. And I think the same thing would be said for, you know, the architect and engineer on the project, that having gone all the way through it, we all see kind of where those gaps were. So, but we do, we do feel like we've got, we have detention. We have, this site is better than it was before. So there, it's not, it's not what we designed for, but we do feel like we did, we have improved detention drainage in this area.
Thank you. Well, I, I mean, I won't, I'm not speaking for the commission or asking the commission to take a particular view. I think, as this evening has shown, I probably am as interested or more than most people in stormwater compliance. In this particular case, I think my feeling is that, one, the effort was made in the project design to meet the criteria. The context is that there's not stormwater on the square, so anything is an improvement, and it is not a small burden to do stormwater on these properties anyway. So in the interest of incrementalism, I, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily the case that we need strict adherence in this case, since they've tried, but I submit that to the rest of the commission. Is there any other discussion? Anybody from the audience? All right. Hearing no...
Well, I have, I'm sorry, I have one more question. I mean, he said, just swap out the strain. How hard is that? I mean...
My, my, to be honest, my only concern about that is what it might do to the roof warranty, because there's no more important warranty that comes with a building.
And I kind of wanted to ask this, just from, from an architect's standpoint, this is the first time we've done this, and this is an issue around the square.
Yes, this is the first time we've done it, although we've done a green roof where, you know, you get, you get some partial credit for water absorption in the short term.
But how, I mean, how big of a, I don't want to say problem, but that's what I'm thinking of, to retain stormwater on a roof.
Putting water on a roof and leaving it there is always a bad idea. It's, it's our number-one enemy.
Yeah.
So, you know, but this is, this thing, you know, we could build a parking garage for $10 million or so, and, you know, parking cars is, is very important for the livelihood of the square. Storm drainage should be too. It obviously wasn't for 150 years, but we live in a different environment from the one that our grandparents lived in, literally.
I agree with you. I, I was just asking that, because it seems like something that we are going to have to face real soon again, so...
Yeah, but, but, but the reality is, this is, this is something that, this is an infrastructure project that ought to be addressed as an infrastructure project. It's an infrastructure problem that should be addressed as an infrastructure project, and there's probably federal money out there for it. out there for it.
And, again, I will say, we, we are researching, we've been working on this since this project came up in 208 came up a couple of years ago at the same time, and we started looking at all of the buildings around the square, the sizes of the buildings, the drainage, um, where everything's going, the opportunities for some regional detention, and that's something that we're trying to work on. Um, we've been trying to research how we could provide kind of like pre-mitigation, but a detention mitigation as well. Um, and so, you know, it may be that, um, like this project provides for the twenty-five-year storm, which, that storm event, when you look at the rainfall data, that storm event is the storm where you see the flooding of the streets. Um, that is the, that's where you really start, Bart used to always call it the frog choker. Um, so that, that's the event where you see, like, those quick intense rainfall events that, you know, it rains for fifteen minutes and everything's flooded, and then it stops and moves on, and that's, that's the twenty-five-year event, and so that's kind of where we, why we've always had that twenty-five-year event as our focus, and, so, um, we're looking at some different options and things, though, but.
I'm sorry? John, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, there are other, um, alternatives out there, um, y'all were discussing it earlier, but, um, one would be, other than a blue or a green roof, is a cistern, uh, system where you, the, underneath the building is just raised ever so slightly, whether it be two, three, four inches, um, and, and you're, you're building the building on the little raised columns, and in between the column, uh, lines, it, it holds water. I've seen that before, and then it just discharges directly, uh, to a, to the, you know, out to the curb. Um, so that's another solution that's not, uh, subsurface. It's not in this case, of course, but in the future. Uh, and another would be, um, having the developer reconstruct some of the parking in front of their, their building, and have them, uh, install pervious pavers, um, and, and a filtration system that would infiltrate, you know, allow the water to percolate into the ground, and that would detain stormwater. But there's several solutions out there, so I don't think that the ordinance is, um, too unbearable.
Thanks, John. Anything else? All right. Hearing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion on the request for a variance from the performance criteria for stormwater management.
Motion to approve, subject to other staff conditions.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
A second there.
There is a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, it is granted. Thank you, sir. All right, our next case is case number twenty-eight thirty-one. LT Two Incorporated has filed a request for preliminary plat approval for the Grove at Grand Oaks Phase Eight for property located at the Grand Oaks, um, planned unit development near Morris Drive.
All right, so this is preliminary plat for Phase Eight. Um, the subdivision is gonna be located in the PUD, uh, south of Morris Drive, near the intersection of Bill River Red. Uh, the proposed subdivision would be about twenty-one acres with fifty-seven lot size between, uh, point-two-two acres and half an acre. Uh, the proposed lots comply with the dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning, and the density is appropriate to that area of the PUD. Uh, the applicant has provided a complete streets plan that indicates a sidewalk network that will connect, uh, all lots to the existing sidewalks on Morris Drive. Uh, tree mitigation is required for this development. Uh, three hundred and forty-eight two-inch trees will need to be planted, uh, for mitigation purposes, and a planting plan is being prepared, uh, as of the writing of this report. Um, the, uh, engineering has, uh, provided, uh, comments related to access, water, and sewer, and stormwater. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plat for the Grove, Grand Oaks Phase Eight, with the four conditions that are listed in the staff report. The applicant is here.
Thank you, Robert. Questions from the commission? Gotta be one, I'm still trying to download the report. No? Anyone from the audience who should speak on this case? All right. Hearing none. I will entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight thirty-one for preliminary plat approval for the Grove at Grand Oaks Phase Eight.
I'd make that motion with the conditions that the, uh, staff presented below, the four conditions.
To approve?
To approve.
I've got a motion to approve with staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? It is approved. Thank you, Robert. The next case is case number twenty-eight thirty-two. LT Two Inc. has filed a request for preliminary plat approval for the Grove at, uh, Grove at Grand Oaks Phase Seven for property located at the Grand Oaks Planned Unit Development near Morris Drive.
So, this is now Phase Seven, and this is also, uh, on Morris Drive, on the north end of Morris Drive this time. Uh, proposed subdivision would be, uh, about fourteen acres with eighteen lots, uh, between point-six-two acres and just under one acre. Uh, lots one-oh-two, one-oh-three, and one-oh-four are partially located outside of the city limits. Water and sewer service will be provided with, from within the city limits and extended onto the portion of property that is outside of the city. Uh, there are complications that exist because of the portions of a lot outside of the city. Taxing, voting, emergency services, garbage pickup, that must be addressed, uh, prior to the final plating of lots one-oh-two, one-oh-three, and one-oh-four. Uh, but the applicant intends to immediately begin the process for a petition for including, uh, these properties into the city limits. Uh, until this has been approved, the final plat for lots one-oh-two, one-oh-three, and one-oh-four, uh, cannot be approved. Uh, the proposed lots comply with the dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning, and the density is appropriate to this area of the PUD. The applicant has provided a complete streets plan that indicates sidewalks that connect all lots to, uh, the sidewalks on Morris Drive, and tree mitigation is required. Uh, five two-inch trees will need to be planted, uh, for this, and a planting plan is still being worked on. Uh, engineering has provided, uh, comments, uh, related to access, water, and sewer, and stormwater, and staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plat for, uh, the Grove, Grand Oaks Phase Seven, uh, with the four conditions that are listed in the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions on this one? Um, I guess just pointing out that those lots that currently aren't in the city remind me in question, and that's been remedied since their petitioning for annex. Any question? Anyone from the audience who should speak? We're dwindling. All right. Hearing no discussion, I'll entertain a motion on twenty-eight thirty-two for preliminary plat approval for the Grove at Grand Oaks Phase Seven.
Motion to approve, subject to staff conditions.
Sorry. A motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, it is approved. Case number twenty-eight thirty-three. David Blackburn has filed a request for preliminary plat approval for the Oaks at Oxford Commons Phase Seven and Eight for property located in the Oxford Commons Planned Unit Development near Lakewood Hill Drive.
Okay, uh, this phase of the subdivision are located in the PUD, uh, on the Oxford Commons PUD, on the east side of the power cut, on an extension of Lakewood Hill Drive. Uh, the proposed subdivision would be about thirteen-and-a-half acres with fifteen lot size between, uh, about a third of an acre to half an acre, and, uh, six acres of common area, five point-three acres of which would be dedicated towards conservation. Uh, the proposed lots comply with dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning, and the density is appropriate to that area of the PUD. Uh, this phase is in tract N of the PUD, and is allotted three hundred and eighty-six lots. Uh, three hundred and seventy-one lots will remain in tract N if the plat is approved. Uh, sidewalks are indicated that would connect all lots to future phases of the Oaks. Uh, tree mitigation open space is governed by the twenty-sixteen tree mitigation variance and the twenty-nineteen PUD plan that requires at least fourteen percent land reserved for tree mitigation, as well as at least twenty-eight percent open space, and those can overlap. Uh, areas are designated for both common area and conservation on the plat. Engineering has provided comments. Uh, there are still some, uh, minor outstanding issues that are mostly technical in nature, and the engineering, uh, staff believes that those can be, uh, sorted out, uh, easily. Uh, there are comments related to access in streets, uh, water and sewer utility, grading, and stormwater. Uh, staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plat for the Oaks at Oxford Commons Phases Seven and Eight, with the five conditions that are listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Robert.
Engineer is here, if you have any questions.
Yes. Paul Goodcombe. I did get one comment from the community on this, and it's mainly about access for construction. Can, can you tell me, do you know what access that is?
Right, so, um, yeah, currently, the, uh, the, the street that goes through the first phases of the preserve kind of winds its way, uh, by the church that was recently completed, makes its way out to this phase, but, uh, during construction of Preserve Phase Five, which is where the, the lake is, that's recently been completed, the, uh, the contractor, and it was part of the, the plan to begin with, we created a, a hall road from Buddy East Parkway, kind of the eastern end of that, as it turns to south and starts going toward University Avenue, but they accessed the site from, from Buddy East Parkway through a temporary hall road that was constructed that accesses this area, what they were requesting approval for tonight. And, uh, as part of this approval, we've, we've coordinated with the fire department, and we've discussed this with engineering, I think we've talked about it with Ben, and, and that hall road that was constructed as part of the previous phase that's being completed is gonna be improved to act as a, uh, still temporary, but a more, um, uh, significant or robust, uh, emergency access, uh, and, and will also continue to be used as construction access to avoid construction traffic as much as possible coming through the existing neighborhoods. Uh, that'll all be routed along this new road. There's gonna have to be some minimal grading on the road to make sure the slopes meet the fire department requirements, and it will be widened to a minimum of twenty feet wide with, uh, all-weather surface, a crushed limestone that'll be placed, so. And that'll, that, that will remain in place. In fact, there are easements being discussed now that will be executed that will make sure that that temporary access is, is in place until some permanent road, a, a city street replaces that, and it's no longer needed, which would be a very close alignment to where this temporary access is now.
So that hall road is, it's access from Buddy East Parkway? It's right there at that bend?
That's right. That's right, right at the bend. It's currently gated and locked, but as part of this approval, our client will agree to, to leave that open for access.
Okay. Um, and so, you're not ruling out construction traffic through the existing neighborhood, but it'll be routed most-
I mean, there are still homes under construction that are in previous phases that are, you know, the infrastructure's in place, the lots are under construction. Uh, I, yes, I think it's an accurate statement. I mean, they're trying to minimize the need for using that, you know, route through the neighborhood for construction, but as with most any neighborhoods, there may be some, but, I mean, it's more convenient for really everybody involved to not meander their way through these existing residential neighborhoods and access from this other direction as much as possible.
Thanks, Paul.
I have a question. You said, you noted conservation area on there. We approved this, what's the, what's to keep y'all from deciding that you don't need to conserve anymore, that you can squeeze another five or six lots on there?
Well, so, um, I don't remember the year, but there were, the, the same applicant here, David Blackburn, or Blackburn Communities, was granted a variance to the tree mitigation-
January sixteen.
Sixteen, okay, so, we requested on David's behalf, uh, or Blackburn Communities' behalf, a variance to the tree mitigation requirement for this project as a whole, because it's so large and some of the various, uh, challenges to trying to comply with the ordinance as it's written. And part of that agreement was to set aside fourteen percent of any developed area as conservation area. And there's a very specific and thorough process that we go through with the city's attorney, city planning, with our side. All these are, are tied to an existing, or, or to a plat that's recorded at the courthouse, and I believe it goes further than that into some legal avenues that I don't fully understand. It really, I think, to change these things, I know it does. We, we tried to, we tried to change about five feet of one just to rewrite a little ditch on another area of Oxford Commons, and it takes literally an act of, um, the legislature with the state to change these preservation areas, so. They're pretty secure.
Hey, Kirk, this is Paul. We, um, as, as they have gone, as David's gone phase by phase, we have worked with his attorney to get conservation easements on all these areas, and sometimes they have to be tweaked a little bit to, you know, recognize exactly where it falls, but they go out and get descriptions of these conservation areas, and we have them encumbered, uh, as we go phase by phase. So that, that's how they don't get to put those additional slots in.
So, so you get some kind of easement? I mean, there's some kind of easement, something's reported, that-
Yeah, yeah, it's an easement in favor, a conservation easement in favor of the city, so they can't go forward and block out more lots there.
Okay, that's, that's an answer.
What percentage did you say was maintained? Fifteen percent?
Fourteen.
Well, it's a, it's a cumulative fourteen percent of the entire area that was encompassed in this variance from two thousand and sixteen, I guess, but, so some phases we've exceeded that, and we kinda, we, we essentially create a credit so that future phases already have their conservation area established. Uh, some, some phases we've done have exactly fourteen percent. It, it sort of varies, but as we go, the city, I think right now, the city's ahead. They have more conservation area dedicated than, than we're required to have, so there is a surplus there that future phases may use part of that credit or surplus.
I don't, I don't think our lead will last long. Um, yeah, if you, there's an extensive case history. If you would like to follow up with Ben, rivals war in peace, but, um, yeah. All right. Uh, any other questions? Anybody? Go ahead.
Yeah, you went through a while ago, and I was, I was distracted, so I apologize, and just, you don't have to go into great detail, but this road system, um, that's gonna connect, it's gonna connect from Buddy East, and it's gonna go north, correct?
That's right, there's, um-
You said, what is it, it's gonna be made from crushed limestone?
Crushed limestone, right, which is the same-
Just the temporary.
-material, the, the temporary road, right. For, and this is again, primarily for construction access, to keep it off of the paved, existing roads in the neighborhoods, uh, but also if there is a fire, and for some reason, the fire department cannot access these areas through the existing city street, they have an alternative way to reach this area, uh, which would be down this all-weather access road. And the crushed limestone is, it's actually the same base that we use under paved streets in the city and, and many roads in the area, but, uh, just no asphalt. We're trying to make, make it, built in a way that could be rerouted or changed in the future if the need arises, as future phases are developed, as they, as they move south toward Buddy East. Eventually, there's going to be, and as the, the planners' report mentions here, there, this has always been part of the master plan to eventually make permanent streets connect down to Buddy East Drive, but things shift and change, so that, that permanent connection will happen. We just need the flexibility to be able to reroute that slightly as future phases are developed and we move toward Buddy East, but, but there will always be access by this, this, uh, emergency access drive.
But the, the long-term plan is to have the road, was it Lakewood Cove, maybe?
Uh, I think that's right.
Okay. One I'm getting around to asking you, are, is, are you guys paying for the pavement? Or is, is that gonna be expected? Is the city gonna pay for that?
I don't know. Uh, Blackburn Community, Communities will pay for everything and give it to the city.
Okay, that, that's all I was, wanna make sure I was clear on. Thank you.
That bulb that you had mentioned, uh, is, is that up at the top of Lakewood before you take that right to go down into that area? You had mentioned the bulb that was there. Does that ring a bell?
Well, the, so at the end of, uh, if you go into, to the preserve area now, and to the very end of the road that meanders its way down and by the lake that's under construction and just completed, there is a, a cul-de-sac there, a bulb. Um, I think that was initially intended to be a temporary gravel turnaround at the end of that dead-end street, something that would be temporary when the street's extended, and, uh, again, David Blackburn, our client, here and the applicant, for aesthetic reasons, wanted to make that more of a permanent cul-de-sac. Now, it's not gonna be a dead end, it's gonna be opened up at the end and extended into this phase that we're here for tonight, but, um-
Because that was the question, it couldn't be a dead end.
Right. It will not be a dead end, and it will not have any restricted access. It'll be an open city street.
Other questions?
Nope.
All good. All right. Uh, hearing no further questions, I will entertain a motion on case number twenty-eight thirty-three. Request for preliminary plat approval for the Oaks at Oxford Commons Phases Seven and Eight.
Motion to approve, subject to staff conditions.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
It's approved. Thank you. Case number twenty-eight thirty-four. Shadrack's Oxford has filed requests for-
It's my last time, but-
All right, please let the- Please let the record show that Commissioner Mylan has recused himself again. Shadrack's Oxford has filed requests for, A, a special exception is provided in section 3.8.8.5 Restaurants Additional Standards. B, a special exception is provided in section 2.6.7 Traditional Neighborhood Business Structure Height. And C, a variance from section 2.6.7 Traditional Neighborhood Business Front Yard Build To Line Maximum for property located 1801 Jackson Avenue West. Ben?
So you all might recall this piece of property from back in January when the commission recommended a modification to the Magnolia Park subdivision, which actually created this lot. It was, it's about a half-acre lot. It was originally, I think this might have been a bit of Freudian since I've had a lot of conversations on Highland Square lately. It's in the Highland Court Development, not Highland Square Development. But nonetheless, the applicant was approved for a site plan to construct Highland Court, as we know it now with all the, you know, the commercial businesses, the retail businesses that are there. And, but now, there's a proposal for a coffee shop, Shadrack's, on this particular property. And, and while the building that will be proposed is, it's basically, it's different than what was originally approved as part of the, the Highland Court subdivision, or site plan, excuse me. So with that, they're trying to maintain some continuity between this new building and the rest of the development that's there. They're requesting for the ability to have a drive-through and that's, that's a, a special exception requirement inside the zoning district. And while I think a lot of the intent behind that when that was created was to protect the sanctity of residential neighborhoods and how that could potentially impact a residence if you have a, a drive-through with an ordering window and vehicular traffic, things like that. So nonetheless, this is a, it's a special exception here, but I think it's appropriate, we have a lot of drive-through businesses in this particular area. You know, one thing that is important is stacking, stacking space for people that are in the ordering, ordering bay. I believe that the applicant's done a great job too, and we've worked with them, we've had multiple discussions on this. I think they've done a, a nice job of creating as much stacking space within this particular site to, to help mitigate any potential conflicts with stacking into Jackson Avenue like we've seen at another business across the street. So, you know, that's something that is of note here. We did provide a condition of, of approval for that, that particular request that should stacking impede on the flow of traffic on Jackson Avenue, then it's the owner's responsibility to direct that traffic or that stacking into the site. And, you know, so that will be their responsibility and we'll, we'll oversee that, and engineering will oversee that when that time, if that happens, hopefully never does. They do also want to have a one-story building like the other buildings that are there. I think that that makes sense, especially with the, the rhythm of, you know, all those buildings, that, that just seems to make sense and fit in. There is a, a discussion in here about the, you know, the material colors and the design of the building. It is not consistent, it's different with the rest of the development, I think it will stick out. We did put in a requirement, you know, that they try to incorporate some elements. I don't know that I'm, I'm, you know, stuck to these particular things, but tried to incorporate some develop, some elements like the stone or the color or even cornicing or some other options that, that maybe we haven't discussed of the existing buildings into the design here. So we do support the special exception with that as a condition of approval. And then lastly, it's a variance to the front yard build-to line, so that, again, this building is consistent with the rest of the buildings. Otherwise, they would basically be at the backside, for the most part, at the backside of those parking stalls that are at the front of this site, which is certainly not, not what was originally intended with the development of the site and it could potentially create some issues with, you know, traffic flow and parking requirements and shared acts, or shared parking agreements that are, that are already in place. So staff is supportive of that, that request as well. So staff recommends of, A, the special exception for the drive-through with two conditions. Staff does recommend approval of the one-story building with one condition. And staff recommends approval of the build-to line variance with one condition. Paul represents the applicant, the applicant is here too, if you have any questions for him, happy to answer anything else that you might have.
All right. Questions from the commission? We can discuss all three requests together, then we'll vote individually. Well, I'll start off just to discuss one of the staff conditions, is, you said the applicant's present? Could you come forward, please?
Sure.
Just state your name, please, so we have them.
Hey, I'm, I'm Josh White and me and my business partner Brad Aiken are opening Shadrack's.
Thank you, sir. One of the staff recommendations is to incorporate some of the architectural elements of the surrounding buildings. Is that something that, you know, y'all would entertain or do you have strong feelings against it?
I'll put it this way, I do have strong feelings against it because I like the look of the Shadrack's building. But I'm more than willing to work with them to, you know, to try and incorporate into the, into the flow as much as possible. I, I don't want to look like, I hope it makes sense, I don't want to look like the shopping center, but I'm willing to, I mean, I understand what Ben's saying as well, he don't want it to be totally different. So from that standpoint, absolutely, I'm willing to entertain ideas, for sure.
Is, is Shadrack's a chain? I'm not familiar with it.
It is, it's a very small chain, it's, this is a franchise-type deal, so I'd have to bring the owner of Shadrack's in as well to get his approval. It's out of Jonesboro, Arkansas, they have five stores there, they're opening up three in Memphis, Conway, Arkansas, that sort of thing. So my wife's from Jonesboro, we've been going there for years, that's how we got here.
Sounds good. Other questions?
Yeah, this is, I'm just curious, what is, is this just going to be grass right here, the rest of the open area right?
Yes, yeah. So we, we might have like a small patio area because there'll be a walk-up window on that side, but other than that, it'll be landscaped and, yeah, I mean, make it look nice.
Is that like, I mean, this is not necessarily relevant, I'm just curious, but, you know, picnic tables and stuff or just landscaped lawn?
Probably a couple of tables, yeah. Other than that, there will be no seating offered, anything like that, but we will, I mean, a couple picnic tables makes sense, right, especially on nice days, but other than that, it'll be some sort of patio with landscaping around it.
And this is going to be a question both for you and for engineering, but for you, on the business model side, I mean, I guess y'all have done some market research, do you feel like there's enough traffic flow containment here to keep it from backing up onto?
We feel confident that there is, based on the amount of stacking that we have. Obviously, I can't predict the future, but the models that are in the existing stores in Jonesboro, they move them in and out quickly. Starbucks here is painfully slow.
Yeah.
It, it just is, that, that is not, that is not what we're going after, we're going after a quality product and move people in and out.
And the other half, Rihanna, y'all are, y'all are good with the traffic design?
Yes, we've looked at it and we have made it very clear that in the event that traffic becomes an issue, they would be asked to make modifications. The city always has the right to close any access points. And so we've had, we've had, we had an extensive conversation with them and they understand and have already expressed their willingness and ability to make, you know, changes, whether that's redirecting queues internally in the site, whatever would need to be done, but the stacking is, the way it's designed has been set up so that it is within their site.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Anyone from the audience? All right. Hearing no more discussion, I'll entertain, and we'll go through these one at a time. A motion on the special exception for additional standards, section 388.5.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, is that, or there's?
What conditions, I'm not sure that one has conditions or not.
There are spec, there are staff conditions, is that with or without?
With conditions.
All right, I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, this first special exception is granted, I'll entertain a motion on the special exception for structure height.
Excuse me, motion to approve, subject to staff conditions.
I have a motion to approve, subject to staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? All right, it's passed, and that went, you know, the staff condition for that one was to work with staff on incorporating some elements. We'll leave it between y'all to figure out what's appropriate.
Thank you.
And then I'll entertain a motion on the variance from section 2.6.7 Front Yard Build To Line Maximum.
Motion to approve, subject to the staff condition, I believe it's item C.
That's right. Have a motion to approve, subject to the staff condition, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? It is approved, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Our final case of the evening is case number, let the record show that Commissioner Mylan has rejoined us. Case number 2835, 607 Molly Bar LLC has filed a request for site plan approval for the Astoria for property located at 607 Molly Bar.
Okay, so this is about point six-four acres on the west side of Molly Bar, across from Stone Park. The applicant is proposing to remove an existing single-family residence to construct a residential common interest development consisting of three detached residences and one duplex residence, all of which are three bedroom units. Each unit will be approximately twenty-one hundred square feet and two stories tall. Density requirements for the neighborhood residential district allow up to nine units per acre, which this development meets. RCIDs are special uses in our district when located outside of historic districts, the conservation overlay and existing subdivision, and this is not in any of those. Additional standards include the requirements for RCID, RCID covenants, which the applicant is working on getting to us. Parking is provided by two-car garages for each unit with guest parking available in the driveways. Parking in the private road will not be allowed due to fire access. Uses in the neighborhood residential district are allowed sixty percent impervious coverage, this proposes fifty-five and this use complies with the front yard build-to and side and rear yard setbacks. Other review elements include landscaping and tree mitigation, and the proposed landscape design meets standards related to edge buffers, foundation planning isn't street trees, and enough significant trees are being maintained on site that zero mitigation is going to be required. For access, this development will take access of Molly Bar by private drive. Sidewalks are indicated that connect this development to the existing sidewalk network on Molly Bar. The building materials be primarily a painted brick facade with hardy board details and architectural shingled roof. Engineering has provided comments related to access water and sewer and stormwater. And since the writing of this report, engineering has still looked over a response to their original comments. There are still minor technical details that are outstanding, but those should be easily resolved by the design engineer. Staff recommends approval of the requested site plan for the Astoria with the four conditions that are listed in the staff report.
And Paul is the.
Thanks, Robert. This is a nitpicky question, but it's not really going to tie in with other sidewalks, is it? Isn't there a property on either side that doesn't have sidewalks?
That's correct.
Okay.
Sidewalks are a little bit of a challenge.
Yeah.
We're trying to get as close to tying in on each end, well, tying into, or providing a tie-in spot for the nice guys on each side.
Okay, just making sure, thanks.
Yeah, there are no sidewalks.
Other questions? We did have a couple of community members that back up to the property ask about stormwater and Rihanna and Steve met with them and satisfied all their concerns, thank you, Rihanna. I don't have any further questions. All right, I'll entertain a motion on the request for a site plan approval for the Astoria.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Subject to staff. Yeah, sorry, subject to staff conditions.
Subject to staff conditions, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, all in favor? It is approved, thank you, sir. This concludes the business of the commission, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We're not going to.
Happy Valentine's Day.